All right, well, it's five o'clock. I think we've got the whole board here. And so I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order at five o'clock. And ask that you all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now I will read the mission statement. The Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So just a few housekeeping items tonight for the board. When we move in second things tonight, I'm going to go ahead and say out loud who did it for Pam, so that it's on the recording, just so you guys know that I'm going to do it that way. And you also, Kingsley Batway sent out a document that you all should have gotten. So if you want to have that pulled up for reference, he's got a couple of people that are going to, Joy and Lorene, who are going to present. And it is you, Joy, that's presenting, right?
Yeah.
It's me and Lorene are collaborating.
That's what I thought. Okay, awesome. So with that, we'll go ahead and jump right in then to the main part of our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And tonight consists of three items. The minutes of the January 5th, 2021, regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, which was item B, and then bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. So are there any items that board members wish to have pulled off the consent agenda this evening?
See as in cat, India.
See as in cat, okay? So then could I have a motion to place items A and B on the agenda, please? Thank you. Thank you, Sue. And I'm going to take you as the second, India, if that works.
Yep, that's fine.
Awesome. Okay, then all those in favor of approving items A and B on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item C, which is on page eight. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
Some mood.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second, India?
Gotcha.
Okay, and discussion?
Just a quick question from Michael. I just was wondering how are we doing with Durham as they're submitting their bills? Are they being consistent as far as submitting their bills?
Yes, they have been very consistent about presenting their bills to us and even clearing up any questions we have with it. I think they have kind of a company incentive to get their bills paid, put out and paid quickly. So they're getting encouragement from both sides to be timely. So it's been very good.
Okay, thank you very much for the update.
Is there any other questions for Michael or anything else about that item? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of the recommended motion item C, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda. This is exhibit D. This is the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the appearance at the School Budget Review Committee to request modified allowable growth of $133,670.90 for the costs associated with environmental projects, and that this increased allowable growth may be funded by 2021-2022 cash reserve levies.
Some mood.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, India. All right, and with that, I will turn this over to Michael Coughlin. This is something that we do on a regular basis. This allows us to keep our authority regarding the bills here for this asbestos removal. So, Michael, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep, this is one of the functions of the School Budget Review Committee, that they can allow additional allowable growth for unusual situations, is the way it's worded in the code. And the reason that they accept these applications to refund our authority for environmental issues is that we are not in control of this. It is, when we tear down a building, we are required by law to go in and do this work. So it's really, we're following the guidelines of state and federal law. So under that, the position of the SBRC is that they review it to make sure that it falls into the guidelines of the work that we're doing. It's only for the actual removal of the asbestos, or lead, or mercury, or something else that's dangerous. It does not include reinspection or the work that we have to do to get ready for this. It's just the actual work of the company inspecting or testing the samples and then removing them. So this is about a year of activity. And if you've looked at the sheet, the vast majority of it is the asbestos out of the Lowell Building. So we pay for that out of the general fund, and then we receive the authority back. And in one sense, it also stretches our dollars in the Save and Pebble Fund as well, that we're not doing it out of those funds. So this is a practice that's been going on ever since we started the rebuilding save projects that we've been doing over the last 15 years or so. So this is an annual event, or when we have it, and it gives us back the authority, that then we can get our unspent balance strengthened. But it is, as you requested, and as we've talked about many times, that it may be funded by cash reserve. Most of the time, it has been. Last year, it wasn't entirely, because we didn't want to raise the tax rate overall. So it can, it can be adjusted. And this year is going to be an interesting situation with tax rates. But the Finance Committee will talk about that at their next meeting. And then it will come to, I believe, the second meeting in March.
Yeah, I'm glad to see the word "may" in there. I think in the past, we just automatically put "will", which kind of implied a predetermined motion for an actual tax increase to support this. But, you know, we always want the budget authority, but we're not obligating ourselves to actually increase taxes at this point. So "may" I think is the right word, and I appreciate that, being it worded that way.
Good point, Lyle. Board, do you have anything else for Michael? Trying to see everybody. Okay, all right, then seeing none. All those in favor of approving exhibit D, the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request, please signify by saying aye.
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 All the, sorry, all those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Awesome. Well, that concludes our action items for this evening. We're going to go ahead then and go on, move on to exhibit E. This is our Human Resources update. We have some awesome guests with us this evening. I can turn it over to Kingsley to kick it off, and then Lorene and Joy, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director McNally, President McNally. So I'm going to actually have them start first, and it was a little out of order from the information you received. But, you know, I think many times that you have given me kudos in regards to the work that the Human Resources Department's been doing. Last time, there was a resounding, you know, bring us the other people. So I wanted to make sure that I did that in earnest. And so they are, they are on the call. I'm going to have Lorene start first and kind of just give some of the, some of the information related to how are we recruiting differently? And then Joy chime in with the Grow Your Own program and the work that we're doing to make sure that we're putting together agreements with these schools to increase our diversity. So Lorene, you want to chime in first?
Okay, so it's still a little early for us to get a really good projection on, you know, teachers that are maybe retiring or resigning. But, you know, this is the recruiting season. This is always the time that recruitment happens on all levels at universities and colleges. And so we have scheduled ourselves to appear at different recruiting sessions for different colleges and universities. This year, we've done things a little bit differently, because, number one, we've had to do things a little bit differently. Because of COVID, all of the recruiting opportunities are being done virtually, which has provided us a little bit of a blessing, because it allows us to go to some places that we probably wouldn't normally because of where we're at geographically in the country. We are able to participate in these recruiting opportunities virtually and target some different schools that we probably wouldn't have. We are able to hit the big three in Iowa, which is easy. We do that every year. We usually get a really good turnout at UNI. The University of Iowa did something a little bit different this year, where they had opened their recruiting session up to anybody graduating in education in the state of Iowa. So any college/university, which allows some of those smaller schools, things like Co-College, Werkeberg, some of those other smaller schools, to have an opportunity, those students to have an opportunity to attend recruiting sessions there. It also allowed us to specifically target some of the HBCUs, which are the historically black colleges/universities and Hispanic-serving institutions, which is an area that we kind of fell behind in a little bit with applicants in the last year. So we've been able to also participate in those. And then also targeting, you know, when you're trying to think about, okay, so there's all of these other HBCUs and HBCIs throughout the country, then what do you pick? Because sometimes it's hard to convince students in Florida and Georgia why they want to come to Iowa, especially at this time of the year. So also thinking about some places that would make it so that Iowa seems a little bit more attractive for teachers. So I've been looking into, you know, what do state, what do different states pay as compared to Iowa? Or how are that as compared to Iowa? Like Arizona, where there's been a little bit of unrest with the teacher union, because we don't necessarily pay more in Iowa than Arizona does. We definitely have the cost of living. And there's a little bit of turmoil with your union just because of the way that they're paid in relationship to other professions in the state. So, or places like Oklahoma that don't necessarily pay their tuition as well as we do in the state of Iowa. So, you know, hitting Langston University, hitting Haristow State, which is, it's Missouri, so it's not that far from here. Northern Illinois University, also been able to schedule some recruiting out of the University of South Carolina. And particularly, maybe we can attract them having an alumni from, and because they were looking at graduating 700-plus teachers this year. So just kind of looking into some of those places that we, like I said, wouldn't probably normally be able to target. But because everything is being done virtually, able to look at some different places that we might not have looked at before. And then, in addition, because most all of it is held on Handshake via Handshake, which students in universities across the country are connected with Handshake, it also allows me to kind of search through students from different universities, particularly the ones that were participating in their recruiting session, to email them directly and invite them to come talk to our recruiters. So that's kind of what we've done a little bit differently this year than we've done in years past.
Lorene, we've increased our starting wage significantly in the last three, four years. Where do we stand in terms of, has that been helpful? Or doesn't it really make much difference?
It definitely has been helpful. And especially, we've, we've increased the starting step. And so that's definitely been helpful to entice teachers to come to Waterloo. It also, you know, our diversity, you know, folks that want to teach in a diverse situation definitely are attracted to come to Waterloo, because we do have a diverse district.
Is this something, though, that would be affected by the fact that we don't, or because of our issues with licensure from different states? If we're seeking students outside of state? And then also, if the governors, if it goes through, or we lose our diversity plan, would that affect our ability to be able to recruit?
I'll chime in on that question. So Joy's going to chime in as well about kind of what we're thinking about the inroads in getting agreements, partnership agreements or MOUs in place, to ensure that the universities are thinking about how they are bringing forward individuals, so we don't have those issues, because that is a significant one. And then I'm actually going to bring up the diversity plan a little bit later. But that would not have anything to do with our recruitment strategy at this time.
Just one other thing. If you can't get him to come from Florida, just make him talk to Joe Parker. He'll convince him.
So the interesting thing about that is that normally, I don't think we would be looked at as a viable district from Florida. But I've got two districts right now, I've talked to Florida A and M, that actually are considering building relationships with us. So even, God forbid, we don't want our budget and things affected by our diversity recruiting, but what we're doing more is a lot more relationship building. And so the organizations that we're working with, it's beyond just having a budget. We're taking the time to invest and build relationships, so they understand what we have to offer. So like Tara and her team have put together some awesome, amazing videos that talk about what we're doing as a district that's different, why you want to become here, why diversity matters for Waterloo schools. We've tapped into Experience Waterloo, because we're selling a community here for students. We're not just selling a job, but we're actually selling Experience Waterloo, right? And so that is actually working. We actually are gaining a lot of traction for universities, because we're bringing a lot more proactive and relationship-focused. So along that line, we've already started our first memorandum of agreement with Lincoln University. And we currently have Lexus Dunn. And you might be familiar with Lexus, because her mother is Juliette, or her grandmother is Juliette Dunn. She is now doing her student teaching with us from Lincoln University at East High, I believe. And it's funny, you guys said that about money, too, raising the money. Because when I talked to their dean at the time, that was one of the most attractive things, why their dean in Missouri must not pay that much there. I don't know, but they were, they were really excited about the money that, that they can have, and that they could envision getting more students here. So much so that this spring, Kingsley and I are planning on them actually bringing some more of their College of Education students up. So that we're starting with freshmen and sophomore. We're actually bringing them, come check out our district, come check out our community. Let's do a tour. Let's talk about why you want to come to Waterloo. So we're doing our recruiting a little more, like Lorene said, we're actually doing comprehensive. And like, we know we're not just selling you a job. We're selling you, this is your work, this is your life, this is where your kids will be raised. So let's talk about, you know, school experience. Let's talk about what we have to offer for our youth. And so that's kind of something that we've switched to when it comes to our recruiting efforts, especially for our diverse candidates. Because of course, initially, when they hear Iowa, they don't think of diversity. And so I said, well, no, I'm a majority-minority district. Oftentimes, depending on where you're from, we can offer you as a district a better diverse experience as a teacher than you can get in some of the larger metropolitan areas. And to boot, we have almost a quarter of BIPOC administrators and things of that nature that a lot of the larger cities are offering. So we are having really good interest when it comes to other colleges being interested in our district. And it is, much like what Lorene said, it's the, one of the few blessings that has come out of COVID is that people are looking at us, and they're considering us, and they're thinking about, do I want to go to Waterloo home? And so if they talk to me, hopefully, like Kingsley's jumping on, we get Tavis from Experience Waterloo, we actually pull him on calls to talk about the community. So we're really doing it. We're throwing everything we got at them and saying, you want to come here to teach. So, so far, we've had results from that. So, yep, we're excited. And we had this really robust plan of rolling out our pre-K through 12 teaching program, which we've already started it at the Waterloo Career Center, and of course, we have Early Childhood. But we wanted to actually have the club up and launched. But COVID kind of put a hold on some of that as well. But even with that, I mean, in December, we hosted a virtual teaching event, where we actually had students actually connect with us virtually and talk about elementary education. You know, computer science, this is going to be a big thing. And so the STEM department and the computer science department from UNI, I mean, they went all out. They sent activities to the kids. And we're planning to do another one of those, and as well as they're starting to have virtual visits as well. So as much as possible, we're getting kids in our, in our district introduced to the opportunity to become teachers, so.
How many job offers are we prepared to commit to right now for 2021-22?
You know, we've already offered, initially, we offered about three, three or four contracts for the semester, thinking about for next year. It's hard to say, Lyle. I mean, I could see us offer maybe, maybe a potential of an additional 10 positions right now, just knowing how our numbers fluctuate. But remember, as we talked about, I can't remember when we talked about it, but it was some time ago, COVID has done some weird things in regards to people leaving. And so I don't want to say, hey, we can potentially hire 30 or 40, because some people may not leave. A lot of people are sticking and staying right now because of COVID challenges.
It is recruiting season, so we don't, we want to get that number just right, you know? We want to recruit now for exactly how many we're going to need. So I guess it's up to you to figure that out.
Kingsley, this is Sue, and I was just wondering how we are specifically targeting any hires of Bosnian or Hispanic origin?
Yeah, so Lorene spoke to that a little bit briefly about us focusing on Hispanic-serving institutions as well as we expand our recruitment portfolio, again, virtually because of COVID. As far as our Bosnian outlook, that is a consideration. And so we look at, you know, ethnicity from that perspective as well. We don't necessarily, I can't think of any hires right now that we have for teachers particularly, but we do have a couple administrative support positions that we have been focusing on, our Bosnian applicants. And so it's, it's an exciting time. It's a, it's a weird time, an awkward time from a recruitment perspective. But I think that's, as you know, that's something that our team, you know, to capitalize on these opportunities, to do some things differently, where other people may be sitting put.
Well, that might be the advantage of, you know, your Grow Your Own programs, with some are minority populations, where you won't have necessarily universities tied to that, where, you know, we can tap into some of our existing students and help grow them through and have them long-term. So that's kind of the advantage there, because, you know, we're, we talk about our Bosnian population, our families from Burma or different places, the, our Congolese population, whatever. We have, you know, lots of smaller groups, so Marshallese, so.
India, go.
Go ahead, India.
Five minutes.
Can you just describe what it looks like when you do a virtual teacher recruitment? I mean, do you have like a lineup every 15 minutes, every 20 minutes? You know, I know you mentioned you had like 700. I'm like, wow, I know 700 are not coming. But, you know, if we had it downtown at the, by Sullivan, we could get 500 to 700 people, of course. But what does it look like now as far as doing a teacher recruitment?
So.
I have Joy just chime in. Oh, go ahead. I have Lorene, I have Lorene chime in to kind of what's, how's the process working? And then I have Joy chime in based on the recruitment efforts we did this, this past year during COVID.
So Handshake makes it very easy. They kind of set everything up for you, and then based on the recruiters that you have. And it allows you, you know, before, if we were going to someplace, physically going to someplace, a lot of times, they wouldn't, they would let you bring two, maybe three people to talk to students. Four, if you were willing to pay extra, that kind of thing. But, you know, a lot of these different recruiting opportunities will let you bring, as bring, I say, as many recruiters as you want. And so you basically just kind of attach them to the recruiting session, and they set up one-on-one slots for you every 10, each recruiter every 10 minutes. And so the student just signs up to talk to a recruiter. They do that virtually over video through Handshake. And then there is also an opportunity to do group sessions. So, you know, someone like Kingsley could talk about overall through a group session with students as well, and talk about, you know, why they'd want to come to Waterloo to make Waterloo their home and career.
From our end.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Do we offer any tuition payback or loan payback for new hires?
We do not. We are looking at that. I need to talk a little bit more with Michael, just in regards to some of the informations come out of the current administration in regards to the, you know, the funding that's come out, whether or not that'd be a possibility, not to use the funding, but actually as an opportunity to maybe thinking about how we're more flexible with our benefit package. So at the current time, no, but we are looking at that, actually, since you emailed about it today.
Well, I would say, I think the, the virtual work you're doing, I think is a good thing, you know, as, you know, on the flip side of that, you know, as, you know, as a parent of a senior this year, you know, we've been through a lot of virtual college visits, you know? And it really was interesting for us. It was a good way to narrow down our candidates, our college candidates, per se. And, you know, in our situation, where one school on paper seemed to be better than the other, when we approved the, just the first virtual visit, we were, it flipped that. And so I think that's could be a very good starting point tool, and you can kind of maybe narrow your profiles down of potential candidates. So I think it's a, you know, although it's been a tool, it's kind of been, you know, kind of pushed into play with COVID, I think that it will probably continue to be a tool regardless of conditions. And I think that the better we are at it, you know, the better we have a first chance of getting some people, you know? It's that first impression, whether it's a virtual or in-person, is going to maybe set the tone for whether you have a chance at employees. So like I said, we, I've experienced that as a parent, you know, with going from the college side. But, you know, it's very much the same, I think, when you're trying to recruit somebody in, because they're doing the same thing, they're kind of recruiting a student in, we're kind of recruiting, you know, a student to a place, so. So good job with, you know, getting those tools in place. And like I said, maybe watching what other places are doing to keep a, so we can kind of keep on the leading edge of those type of, you know, technologies and stuff. And good idea of pulling some people in from, like I said, Tavis and different people to help try to sell to communities. Well, that's a good, good idea, good thinking.
I agree. And I wanted to thank Lorene and Joy for coming. We hear so much about what you guys do. And I have been dying to, to meet both of you. And Joy, you know, because you're like our, you know, our brand-new baby, and you're doing this amazing job that we hear all these things about. And we're like, Kingsley, we want to see her. So I'm so glad you came, and for what you bring to the table and the work that both you guys do. It just, it's something that people don't always think about, but the change that it makes for our kids, both as a board member and as a parent. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate it so much. That's so, we appreciate that support. It just means, it means much when you're out there and you're working and you're trying to get kids here. But again, again, virtual has, it's opened up a world for us to connect with other people. But again, again, virtual has, it's opened up a world for us to connect with other people.
Aster, did you still have something?
I did. I, I think it might have been answered, but I know we were talking about the Teach Waterloo program and cohorts. Where are we at with the current cohorts and what are we looking at for future?
Yeah, Joy, do you want to chime in just where we're at with the first cohort and the second cohort?
Sure. The first cohort, of course, you guys know, Dawn is actually already a teacher now. She did her student teaching. And we have two more individuals from the first cohort that will be student teaching coming up here. It's Ben and Pam. And then in the second cohort, we have nine additional students that are now enrolled in Teach Waterloo that are doing absolutely amazing. And so you and I has been a real, you know, I know that we had to work through some things, but they've been a real trooper in helping us figure out how to best serve the Teach Waterloo fellows. And so I'm really, really pleased with, with the work and the progress on there. Yeah, so we've got two remaining from the first cohort. We've enrolled nine additional. Actually, there's possibility of, we, we probably have some more and they're looking at summer stuff. I mean, they're just doing a wonderful job. So they're trucking along as well.
Thank you for McElroy Trust too, just because they were, you know, spearheading the funding from that perspective. You and I had done a really good job of changing their, our teaching, their teaching model to really incorporate adult learners in different ways, especially from a school setting. But again, there, I mean, as y'all know, there were some times where it was a challenge and McElroy Trust being able to stick and stay a little bit and see this vision through has been phenomenal. We're a part of a national network now. We were across, across the country, about 10 to 15 of us, and people are excited about the work that we're doing because it is transformational and it's going to mean a lot to our, our, our numbers in particular. Well, I want to thank both Lorraine and Joy. I appreciate it. I want to have them get off because I know they're busy people and
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ladies.
I don't know if you had an opportunity to review both the focus groups in the employee handbook as well as the vaccine update. I'll just briefly talk about those and have you have questions if you have them. With the focus groups, you know, those have started. We hope to have recommendations to Jane as the topics have been wide ranging. Some of the topics have been discussing extended family leave and also looking at the start, start date again, a lot of people really enjoyed that. Stephanie, Dr. Moran wants to chime in in regards to that. That's helpful. That would be helpful. I, I think the biggest thing, I just want to give Dr. Lindman a lot of kudos. You know, I think a lot of people are excited that the initial part outside of the video that we shared was what will make Waterloo different? You know, we always talk about that, but we really try to push that as a theme. And I know Lyle has talked about that as well from time to time. What can we do that others aren't doing? And what we want to do as well is not only continue in this focus group process and have some recommendations that we can put forward in this upcoming handbook for the upcoming year. So we try to do what I usually do, since I'm a Samsung guy, I usually make fun of Stephanie because I know she's an iPhone person, but you know, list of all the things that we are doing, maybe in comparison to other districts, because and I'm on the chat with UENS, I frequently give them our policy information about all the things that we're doing. But I think that to disconnect, I think our staff don't know about some of the things we're doing in relation to other districts such as emergency leave, such as parental leave. Those are things have come up during our focus groups that we're able to share with people that we have made those changes. And just as an example, you know, when you think about an iPhone, you know, you have that list of all the things that iPhone, you know, doesn't do, and you have the list of all the things that Samsung does do, and you're still trying to you know, make sure that you can grab all the paper for all the things that Samsung does. And so with that, and see Lyle's the only one smiling with that joke, but I'll keep going regardless. With that, you know, that's just something that we can share with our employees, I think will help them have a better understanding of what we offer in comparison to other districts and maybe even give us some feedback that we can change and look at some other things that we might be aware of.
In your focus groups, just, just remind us, like, what's the breakdown of those who are involved? So, you know, is it, you know, first-year teachers, you know, people who are, you know, been there for a while, you know? How do you guys make sure that you have a good voice across the board as far as the district being involved in focus groups?
Yeah, so we do it two ways. One, we send out a survey initially to ensure that those that can't participate because we know we have young families and other things that that timeframe may not work, they can send their survey responses ahead of time. They like to change. We then take those themes and then we review them with, we have a group of teachers, paras, administrators. And whenever we don't have, last year we had more custodial staff, whenever we don't have a particular group, we plan on still taking the recommendations and workshopping with those groups. And so I plan on meeting with ASME and meeting with some of the people that haven't participated, just to ensure they have an opportunity to look at it and add some pieces just in case they missed or we missed some issues that they want to put forward. And then lastly, with the vaccine update, you know, we we are hoping to start large-scale distribution this week. We did start vaccinating folks yesterday. Yesterday from that we had some additional vials and we were quickly able to connect and use our over 60 list to get some people vaccinated. I just made, made a couple of calls, more than a few calls, just to get through the list because some people weren't answering. Initial few vaccinated, but our large-scale vaccination, we're hoping later on this week. We've been talking with Unity Point officials and this has basically been my entire day today. I'm trying to figure out what the state's doing. Also, we have a location. Currently, we have a plan. We have a tier list of how we're going through. We're really just waiting on vials. We have a process. Everything is ready to go. I, kudos to my team. Kudos to Dr. Lindeman and Dr. Mohorn. We spent a lot of time going through this to make sure we have a plan in place. It was really just implementing it soon to get the information.
Kingsley, can I ask you, will people have to, how will you treat staff that need to leave a building? I know we talked about this in our last meeting that, you know, kind of dependent on where the vials were going to be. If they're going to be at the clinic that we have on university, how will people get there? Will they have to go before or after school? Will they have, you know, time to be able to do that? How, how you foresee that happening?
Yeah, we may be able to use actually the community-based clinic. They're currently, Unity Point is housed out of I totally forgot the name of the church. It's Onmobile. Okay, I can't remember the name of the church. I was out of a church, Onmobile. And we're probably going to use that location because there was some, a focus of wanting to not have to take their operation and move it a ton. They have a pretty good operation where they can vaccinate about 20 people per 15 minutes, 80 people an hour. And so we're just going to use that location. That being said, we're looking at weekend opportunities and also the upcoming parent-teacher conference. And so right now, we're not as concerned with having to stagger the time because we're hoping to do it either during the weekend or during our off day on parent-teacher conferences.
Awesome. Thank you.
I know I asked this question last time, I just can't remember the answer. Because they're not our staff, but they do serve our students, how is that working with like Durham? Are you guys talking to Durham employees or, you know, that staff to make sure they're getting vaccinated? Are they in the mix?
They are. So we have subs, we have bus drivers, we have AEA, we have Boys, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, YWCA. So we have all our communities and schools. We have our community partners that are a part of our list as well now. They may get it as far as childcare agencies, but we at least have them on our list so we don't miss them. We did have to go back to the bus drivers. We had a discrepancy on the numbers and I think there, there may have been a missed email from that perspective. So they are actually running their staff through tonight and tomorrow morning, just to double check those names and numbers to ensure we didn't miss anybody. And we have a waitlist as well that we're sending out to people that may have declined the vaccine initially and came upon new information and wants them to take it or may have not had let us know in, in general. And so we have a link that we send out to them to make sure they get signed up. And they'll have to wait until the end, but we can still get them a vaccine.
Are we still sitting at like 95% wanting to get it?
We're about 92.7% right now. So we're still in the 90s. That stayed, that stays consistent. If anything, we're going to, it's going to be higher, maybe closer to that 95, Stacy, just because of people are all, have emailed me a ton requesting it, you know, hearing about it and wanting to make sure that they get it.
Is this a Moderna or the Pfizer?
We don't know. And so initially, we were thinking that it was going to be Moderna primarily. Then we found out it was going to be Pfizer. Then we thought it was going to be Moderna and it's gone back and forth a little bit. So that's why you didn't see that in the update because I want to make sure whatever's in writing, we're sure it's going to happen. But so far, it's either or. It's going to be Moderna or Pfizer for sure.
It might be both.
Before Kingsley goes, is there any way that you can kind of go over a little bit summarizing the transition back to full-time for our high school kids, please?
Yeah, I was going to switch off after this HR update to kind of take over Dr. Lindeman's time during superintendent update. Is there any more questions about the vaccine before I move on?
Kingsley, I have a call, I'm sorry, Sue somehow got disconnected and she had a question when and I don't even, I'm not really even sure. I'm just going to read this. I'm not, she asked if we offer paternity leave. This has nothing to do with vaccines. She just asked me if I could ask that. And I said, I thought that was part of our short-term disability, our FMLA stuff, but
No, it's a part of our parental leave currently. So we have we've, that allows for maternity leave. We don't have maternity leave, but you, currently you can get, use your sick time under a doctor's care. Typically have maternity leave, but many of our staff can use that time under doctor's care and use their sick time.
Super. Okay, thank you. Sorry, that's off topic.
All right, so switching gears from the vaccine. And moving on, you're okay with moving forward, President McNally, on the superintendent update? Okay. Well, I just want to start with the legislative concerns, just because I know that Jane or Dr. Lindeman has talked to you explicitly about it. And Dr. Mohorn, please chime in whenever you would like to discuss any more of this information. The voucher, please continue to just report out or talk to House Republicans about this bill. As you know, Dr. Lindeman has been working night and day, sending emails or at least making one phone call to individuals, just explaining kind of our issues with the bill and what that means. You know, one thing that has come out that I talked to Margaret Buckton earlier today was that there's some information that the graduation rate is at 60, 67% or or some information that seems to be mischaracterized in relation to what the true numbers are. There's a list of schools that I believe the governor had mentioned in her address, and the graduation rate is a number that's been going out that again, has not been the right number. So whatever you can do to talk to them about, you know, hey, while we, while we know that some of our students, you know, come to us and we, we welcome them with open arms. If you look at our data across the district, over time, as they matriculate through our district, we do grow our students at different rates. And so, and we at a, at a, at a really good rate and a really good pace. And I, I guess it's just something that we haven't necessarily communicated well or communicated effectively with our, with our legislators. And so we want to make sure we're doing a better job. And so I'll, I'll connect with Dr. Lindeman. I'm sure she sends information out in regards to that. But this is new information that we were hearing that just maybe mischaracterized and we want to make sure that our legislators have the correct information. The diversity plan, as you do know, has, has moved forward, not necessarily passed just yet, but definitely it looks like it will pass. There is some maybe consternation between the Senate and the House. The Senate passed it effective on enactment. The House had not passed it effective on enactment. What's that, what that means is that it normally is passed effective immediately when it means effective upon enactment. And when it's not an enactment, it means July 1st. And if it's done July 1st, that means it wouldn't happen until the following year. So we're still waiting to hear more information. You may have more information regards to that than I do. But we're still waiting to hear more information in regards to what's going to happen. March 1st, open enrollment deadline is right around the corner. And so I know that there's some decisions that have to be made relatively quickly. And then last but not least, the AB transition. And so you saw some of that based on my email, I believe, last night or yesterday evening in regards to how things are going. As I said, in general, students are excited to be back. Teachers are excited to have that additional time with students. That's going well. But there are some concerns, you know, obviously with the amount of students we've, we're seeing in the hallways, we're looking at different elements. And it was a weird week last week with the weather and also the TQ day. And so there's definitely some conversations that still need to have and some planning as far as, okay, what are we going to do differently to manage more effectively? You know, as people are coming up the stairs and as people are crossing over lines to get to classes, how will we make sure that's not as jumbled up as it can be? Just trying to put some process in protocol. This is new, and I think that's what a lot of teachers and administrators have said. This is basically almost like starting school new or starting high school new from the first day as far as some of these protocols. So it'll take some time, but I just got off the, a call with some of the East teachers that we have a progress committee and things are going well. They were excited. But again, another area of concern is the lunchroom that we knew was going to be area of concern. And just making sure that we communicate with our students about, you know, hey, where they can go, how they utilize the shields and where they're, where they're at and located. There's just some things that we need to shore up a little bit and we're committed to doing that and community working with our building administration to make sure that those gaps get cleaned up. But I'm excited about the first week. But that doesn't mean that there aren't challenges. And so that's what we're going to try to work through. We pride ourselves on having one of the, I feel like the district that takes health and safety to the umpteenth. And so I don't want that to, to change in regards to this transition. I really want to make sure we're pushing forward that as well. Marla has spent a majority of her time over this last week. Obviously, she's been busy in general due to her own responsibilities, but also COVID. But just in general, making sure that we have our contact tracing protocols really in place, regardless of, you know, who's in or who's out for a particular day. So kudos to, you know, Ms. Page and the work that she's doing in regards to that. So I think it's, it's been a team effort, but there's still a long way to go and we'll continue to try to send you updates every week in regards to what we've learned and what we've changed. Nor to address some of those concerns.
I understand that it was the first week, but there was a lot of time that went into planning this. And there were a lot of procedures that had been said that they were going to be followed and they weren't. And I think that that has been a concern as both a board member and a parent is that yeah, it's new, but it's not new. I mean, we talked about doing this way back in November. So to not have things put in place that were written down, you know, in ink, that they were going to be done and then they weren't. I mean, that's a concern.
Absolutely. And we'll work with our building principals to get those rectified. Thank you. That's it. I don't know a good enough job is closing as Dr. Lindeman does, but that was all I had.
That's fine. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. So, um, with that, we can move on to director reports. And I don't have my little cheat sheet in front of me, so I don't remember who I'm supposed to start with tonight. So I'm going to start with India because she's closest on my, on my screen, so.
Thank you. I think, I think my comments tonight will definitely, definitely just mention the first week was kind of interesting just to hear the comments, but I know it's a work in progress. You know, this is not going to be easy. There's going to be a lot of hiccups, but there's going to also be some good things. I do want to make a comment because you did say it's like the going back to school the first night in the fall and it was like that at my house, like, oh my God, we're going back and we're going to see our friends all over again. I was like, listen, it's not, it's not August. But I'm glad that they're back to school, but I know that there's just some things that still need to be worked out and some kinks that need to be worked out. So grace, patience is coming. You know, hopefully you can get some of this stuff worked out as much as possible. And Ms. Page, thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. I know it is a lot of time and a lot of effort and your team is doing their best that they can do. So keep doing what you're doing. I also want to give kudos to, I want to just give a shout out to those kiddos who are being challenged in the system. I hear you. I see you. I know the hoodie has been a big issue in a lot of schools right now. And I just want to acknowledge that we're working on it. I want to continue to challenge our board to have this discussion and talk about this hoodie because a lot of kids are challenging it, you know? It's been a while since we've looked at this dress code. 2017 was the last time that we actually looked at it, but it's been in place since 2010, December. 2010 is when we actually, if not, I think that we actually passed the dress code. So it's time that we need to talk about it. It's time that we look at it as a board and address some of the issues that we're having. It's frustrating, you know, it's frustrating on so many ends. I know teachers are being challenged and they don't want to have to push the policy, but I understand it is a policy. But it's a policy that we at the board need to really talk about and do something about it. So at that, I'll leave it at that. Next person.
And you guys have policy reviewed this week, right, India?
We do, but it's not one of the We do, but it's not one of the items on the agenda. So.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, cool beans. Um, all right, next person, Jesse. I got to go in my head.
Okay. Um, not a whole lot tonight, but I would like to um, uh, recognize Kingsley a little bit. I got to see uh, he gave a wonderful uh, commentary on diversity and what our school just doing. I got to listen to that and uh, I just wanted to thank, I find you the wonderful jobs. Great seeing you working in our committee that way and appreciate what you're doing there. So.
Thanks, Jesse. Awesome. I think Sue, are you back on?
I am. Thank you. I just got back in.
Awesome. Okay, your turn.
Um, I guess first I wanted to offer my condolences to Dr. Lindeman and the passing of her sister. And um, just um, as India said, that takes a lot of grace when it's a sister. So um, and then secondly, I just wanted to thank the staff for their efforts and in joining the focus groups because the more voices we can hear, the more ideas presented, I think it, it helps us all. And thirdly, thank all the high school staffs for preparing for the full return to learn. And I just know it's very difficult and all the struggles, but it's what is right for kids. So thank you all and administration staff for um, forging ahead with that because kids need to be in school. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Aster, are you still, yeah, there, there are.
I am here and I'll go ahead and turn my camera on. I've been.
You're awesome. Thank you.
I've been hiding all meeting, so. Um, just a couple of things. Um, after the third try, I believe the East West basketball game will be going on. Me, uh, the girls, the young ladies will be at East High, I believe, starting at six P M. And the uh, the uh, young guys will be at West High starting at six P M. Um, even with the governor's mandate. Um, make sure you're continue to socially distance, wearing your mask. As you see, I have mine on uh, at home. Um, so just make sure you're, 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 you know, taking every precaution, uh, wearing your masks, staying socially distanced, uh, enjoy. I'll get a front row seat uh, for the first time in a long time. I'll get to watch the game with my son. So um, I'll, I'll look forward to that. I'll probably be switching back and forth from from both of them. Hopefully they'll both be live. Uh, but I just want to, um, I know I mentioned it a little bit before. Uh, thank you to um, Ms. Pageant, her staff. Uh, I know we've been in communication, um, just piggybacking off of what India um, said. Um, and I, I know I spoke with Shelley and a few of the board members as well. Um, and just, we're in, we're in these positions um, to listen uh, to provide insight, to vote on policies and procedures. Uh, but, but, but we're here, um, in, in my estimation, more uh, for the, for and I want to put this, I want to make sure I put this in, 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 in the right, in the correct way. Um, we have to listen to those um, that we're serving. And I, I, I know a lot of times the youth uh, get overlooked. Um, they don't vote for us, but, but they're a huge part um, of this district. They're a huge part of our community. So um, if we don't listen uh, to their cries and a lot of things that, 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 that they want, um, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a youth advocate. So uh, we've been going around this, these things for quite a while. So uh, they have voices, they've expressed their voices, and I believe it's time for us to listen to them. So I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
You're welcome, Aster, and I hope we get those games in. Yes.
Yes. Third, the third time is the charm should be.
Yes, exactly. So, all right, Stacy.
Um, I wanted to first say thank you to Kingsley for addressing the issues that were going on last week. I know that there's a lot so many moving pieces. Um, and that there were a lot of concerns and um, speaking to India and Aster, the the overzealousness regarding the dress code last week was very confusing to me. Um, and it was very confusing to a lot of students. Um, yeah, and, and the dress code, it brought it to a head for me. Uh, this has been a concern since it was um, brought into being for me as a parent. It was something I actively um, worked to try to have it not look the way it does now. And so, um, but then dealing with it as a parent as long as I have and seeing um, the changes that have been made. It's just got to a boiling point where it just, it, it has to be looked at again. Um, it's not, it's just not. It's not where it should be. We'll leave it at that. Um, the only other thing I wanted to say was that uh, to happy birthday to my son. He's twenty-one today and he is a fourth generation Waterloo Schools graduate who turned twenty-one today. So happy birthday, Clayton.
That cannot be. He cannot be twenty-one. No way. Ah, so, okay, Lyle.
Um, a couple of things. First of all, obviously condolences to to Jane and her family. We all need to do whatever we can to lighten our load. I know we can't really do that much, but if we need to reschedule meetings or, or do whatever to allow her to spend a proper amount of time with her family, why, why that's, you know, I support that a hundred percent. Um, I was happy to hear that the uh, the salary uh, increases we've done the last few years, particularly the starting salary have, are noticeable. And uh, we may need to continue on that path because I don't know what's more important than recruiting, being able to, you know, attract the best fit teachers that you can identify to, to land as high a percentage of those as we possibly can. So so I think the starting salary, we need to continue uh, the improvements that we made um, the last few years. Um, happy to see the students back. I think that's the right thing to do. Uh, but the combination, well, there's two things I think that are really important at this point. One is getting the teachers vaccinated. I'm happy to hear that that may be on full swing the end of the the week because that will uh, walk its way into, to certainly some uh, some improvement. Uh, you have to, have to believe that. And then also the contract tracing. I don't know too much about that, but it is now more important than ever, I think. So that in those cases where, you know, the extra students are creating little, little micro pools of uh, you know, infection. We need to be able to identify those and address those, eliminate those as, as quickly as we can. So I think the contract tracing is now more important than ever. And again, the vaccine uh, should really, really help uh, you know, at, at least on the, well, not only on the teacher's side, but, but if the teachers are vaccinated, that's going to help on the student's side too. So um, happy to hear the progress on all those.
Shanley, this is Sue again, and I just wanted to clarify that was random. And when we were talking about benefits as far as paternity, because um, my son-in-law works, I understand, for a private corporation, but they actually do give six weeks paternity for new fathers. So I know that's a huge recruitment tool also.
Got it. Thank you, Sue. I didn't have that backstory and I was like, oh, I'm just reading your text. I'm going with it. So.
Well, thank you.
No, you're fine. Kingsley answered it and I'm sorry we got disconnected. And I want to say thanks to all of you for your grace and pivoting this to to be a virtual meeting, you know, um, Lyle's gone and we, we, you know, I just appreciate it with, with everything that's been going on this week that all of you did this for us tonight. So, um, thank you for that. I do also want to let you all know that I will get information out to you about funeral arrangements, visitation, et cetera, whatever goes on for um, Jane's sister. And clearly we are holding her in hearts and prayers. So, um, so sad. Um, and then the other thing is, I just want to remind everybody that we will be back in person in February, February twenty-second. So we'll be back in the boardroom. Um, and I think that is about all tonight. So if there's nothing further to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub move. Second.
All right, Jesse and Lyle, thank you. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. We are adjourned. Stay warm, you all. Be well. We'll be in touch. Okay, thanks.